I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the beautiful and perfect friendship among the united whole country.
And I have the invocation offered by Commissioner Cross.
Let us pray. Dear God, our Lord and Father, we pray for all the people that are gathered here today and those of our community listening in. We ask that you protect, heal those in our community stricken with illness. We ask for your blessing to be bestowed on the people of our great country. That we all might work as one, not the same, but one. Not the party, not the race, not the singular interest. Rather, let us be of one heart, one mind, and one desire to serve you and to place nothing above you or before you. Help us to realize that in our service to our community, we are serving you. Help us to see you in all things that we do. No matter the person's age or stage in life, let us see that you created all humanity in our image and likeness. Let us work to protect those less fortunate, the disabled, and those who are most vulnerable in need of our protection and concern. Help us to show your grace and love when we are making all our decisions affecting the county today. The young, the young who are searching for security and truth, the elderly who are searching for care and comfort, the less fortunate who are longing for direction and shelter, and the confused seeking clarity in our community. Let us remember to give direction and extend a helping hand to those of our community who have been marginalized, victimized, or afflicted with additional agit- agitation. Never let the opinion of others nor the social trends of the day allow us to abandon your laws for our acceptance or popularity. Heavenly Father, you have allowed us and the people of our community have chosen us to work for them and to guard, guide, and protect them. Give us more courage to do the right things, not just the popular things. Let our belief in you guide our decisions. Never let our wishbone replace our backbone. Lord, we ask that you watch over and keep from harm those individuals that serve our community and our nation in the military so that they might return to safety, safely to their families, friends, and loved ones. May we always be mindful of their service. Lord, we are nothing without you. Our trust will always be in you. These things we ask in the Lord's name. Amen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning to all of those who have joined us here in the chambers this morning. We'll begin with public comments or announcements. Are there comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Just state your name and...
Uh, Colley Burgess, manager of Carlsbad Irrigation District. I'm here in response to the amicus brief that was filed. Y'all decided to support one entity in Eddie County, over five hundred and thirteen others. So I'm wondering what gives y'all the right to choose somebody over another in the county? You're supposed to represent all of us. And y'all decided to pick sides in a court case over adjudication of these water rights. The New Mexico Constitution states that all water rights are subject to adjudication and that anybody is allowed to enter and into to contest those water rights, the validity of those water rights. Uh, this case has been going on for over two years, so why now pick one side over the other? The other thing, the notification to file this amicus brief was not sent to any irrigation districts or the PVA CD Conservation District, so not one irrigator on the Pecos was served with this notification to file. And then, thirdly, if these water rights were revived, if y'all manage to get these water rights revived on behalf of Intrepid, uh, so that they can make millions and millions of dollars, um, that would put CID in a position where the credit with Texas, the settlement agreement, the compact would basically be violated. We would be forced to make priority calls almost every single year from now going forward. A priority call would shut down all water pumpers with junior water rights to CID, which means most of PVA CD would be shut down from pumping water. There's municipalities and other districts that would be shut down. So, um, y'all's decision to intervene in this case, um, I'd say is a violation against the rights of the five hundred and thirteen CID water users whom y'all are supposed to also represent. So I'm curious, uh, under what right did you file this amicus brief against, against those water users?
It's, uh, public comments, just, uh, you, we can't respond to you during public comment. We can sure have a visit afterward. I'd like to visit with you afterwards, but it's just a...
It's an opportunity for you.
Okay, alright, alright. So, yeah, so it's, uh, I'll just say it's extremely disappointing to see this public entity pick sides, pick one side over the other, uh, in this case. So, alright, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Mr. Burgess. Are there other comments from the audience?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gary Waltershead, I'm with President Mr. Carl Betsy at CID. And I copy what Colley had just explained. We're a little discontent and disappointed in, uh, your reasoning for filing that motion. We're all, we've all been, a lot of y'all are in agriculture the same as I am. We've been here for, I'm a third-generation farmer and we've fought for these water rights, spent thousands of dollars in litigations, and, uh, to have y'all file your motion, it's disappointing. I want to just, uh, hope you might reconsider or see what you can do on that.
Thank you, Mr. Waltershead. Thank you, Mr. Waltershead.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Ogden. My family and I have farmed and ranched in Eddie County for over a hundred and thirty years. Uh, I'm currently farming south of Loving, and, uh, water has been the topic of conversation around our kitchen table my whole life. And the water in the Carlsbad Irrigation District was high on the list since we started farming there at the farm where we are now in nineteen sixteen. My dad was on the Board of Directors of CID before. I am now currently serving on the Board of Directors. The fights that the CID has been through all over these years, for over fifty years of my life, to try and retain the water rights to be able to farm, to make sure that the Carlsbad Irrigation District was whole has been high on our list. The state spent millions of dollars buying land in the Carlsbad Irrigation District to retire those water rights so we can comply with the Pecos River Compact. PVA CD has had lands purchased so that they, there could be water to comply with the Pecos River Compact. So the reasoning behind this lawsuit against Intrepid was that they wanted to be able to pump out of the Pecos River over thirty-four thousand acre-feet of water a year. And so this is even more than the water rights that we have retired in both CID and PVA CD. So the fact that this action would create a problem and an impact on, uh, the whole Pecos River is huge. The first two sources of wet water to comply with the Pecos River Compact are Lake Carlsbad and Brantley. Even though we might do a priority call, we still have to have wet water to comply. So that would mean draining Lake Carlsbad, that would mean draining Brantley Lake and any of the reservoirs above it to be able, if we are short on our compact, and shutting down the pumpers. So that's of great concern for all of us. The other thing is, these water rights were not used for over fifty years. After they closed down the U.S. refinery, uh, east of Loving, they ceased using any of this water. So according to statute and what was determined by the Water Court Judge, is this was abandonment of those water rights because they had not been put to beneficial use for this length of time. So as to echo what Colley and Gary said, we're extremely disappointed that the county chose at this time to enter into this, uh, appeal that Intrepid is doing against CID and Otis Water Users. PVA CD's been part of this, FSID, City of Roswell, EOG, and Yates. So they, they have all been parties on this lawsuit, and for the county to so, choose to file an amicus brief in Intrepid's favor is very disappointing for all of us, especially those who have worked so hard for generations uh, to keep the CID whole with our water. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Other comments? Public comments? Sir?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Norbert Rampe. I'm a resident of Eddie County. I talked to you during your last meeting and taking off from the heartfelt and moving invocation that Commissioner Carlson gave, uh, I want to talk to you some more about the least among us. We go to extraordinary lengths to protect our school-aged children. Speeding through a school zone or not stopping for a school bus are among the worst violations of social and moral taboos. We not only do not extend this protective umbrella to our preborn fellow citizens, but especially in our state, we have opened and now plan to cement in law a free-fire zone on the inhabitants of the womb. Texas child murderers which were stopped in Texas now are invading the eastern areas of our state, our home turf. We did not ask for this. We did not start this war and this battle, but now we are called upon to respond. If we do not put a stop to this invasion, then we will have in Carlsbad and Eddie County the same scene that we have right now in Santa Teresa, New Mexico, right outside of El Paso, where each workday that's the abortion mill there is working, they are killing upward of a dozen children. Just imagine every day an accident with a school bus or involving a school bus and a dozen children being murdered. That's a scenario we are looking at. We have a very good precedent to follow. I have to make a correction to what I told you the last time. Clovis City Council went the coward's way and decided against, for the time being at least, protecting the children. But Hobbs did step up and actually passed an ordinance with teeth in it that will prevent, at least for the time being again, the murder of children in Hobbs. We should follow the example. Again, this battle was not one we chose. It was brought to us. And please don't follow the example of the cowards in Clovis, but follow the example of the magnificent Seven in Hobbs. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ogden. Other comments?
My name's Larry Marker. I'm an independent writing candidate for New Mexico Commissioner of Public Lands. As you all know, we just recently had an election. What I'm gonna do today is I'm basically, I'm here to notify you of the insufficient certification of our election equipment. We have a mess all over the state of New Mexico. Not quite as much here in Eddie County because of the quality of our people that are running our elections, but in other places in the state of New Mexico, we have a mess. I still don't know how many votes I got in that election that was held last Tuesday. Anyway, I'm gonna give you this information. Take your time to read it whenever you can before you vote to certify the election. I'm here to ask you to, uh, call the Secretary of State, tell her you're not gonna certify this vote and that you're gonna order a hand count, and then you're gonna hand count this election before you certify. That's all I got to say. You got a lot of people to talk to, and I'll, uh, talk to you later. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Seeing none. Um, there was one piece of information submitted yesterday. It's not necessarily a written comment. It's a pre-prepared bit of information along the same lines as what was just stated there. Copies have been provided to the Commissioners and we'll make a copy available in the meeting minutes for this meeting. With no other comments seen, we'll move to the service awards. Joseph Rose, detention center, five years. Captain Corona, you wanna come up and join him? And then, Ms. Robin, if you could get a photo, please? The fact that there might not be enough good lighting. Thank you, sir. And then Richard Davis from the detention center with five years. Do, yeah, let's take a quick break and then have both gentlemen in the foyer with the rest of the commission, please. We'll get a photo together out there in the lobby, and we appreciate five years of service detention for both gentlemen. That's outstanding. We appreciate it.
That's like twenty years.
Exactly.
What a cap.
Thank you.
I take notes all over.
Does he need this?
Did you get a copy of this from...
I do.
Or this?
Oh, okay.
How's the day going?
Peachy.
When did the board leave?
When did the board leave?
Wednesday. How long did it take?
Um, it's probably about three-thirty or four.
So they started at nine?
Mm-hmm.
And you had, what, five hundred and forty-one write-in?
Oh, yeah, I don't know. Yeah. Provisional, the UACAVs, then all the hand tallies, then the Election Day hand tallies. That's fun.
Did you order that?
Missing order.
He gets stuck out there with the CID people.
That's why I have a comment.
Yeah.
The information's bad, but they don't stay here to hear it.
Thank you, Commissioners. And again, our appreciation to those two gentlemen, detention, five years of service. That's outstanding. We very much appreciate it. Alright. The next portion of our agenda, we have a public hearing with two items of business in that public hearing, so...
So we're gonna open one, which, we're gonna open the public hearing and use it for both of them, essentially. Is that...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Entertain a motion that we open the public hearing for two items considered.
They're moved.
Motion second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Alright, the first item of business in the public hearing is, um, the hearing for consideration, the adoption of ordinance O twenty-two dash one-twenty-three, uh, adopting the twenty-twenty-one edition of the International Fire Code, regulating and governing the safeguarding, safeguarding of life and property from fire and explosion hazards arising from storage. It's the fire code. Good God, could the... I don't think they could write a longer title. Anyway. Staff comments?
Morning, gentlemen and Commissioners. Um, just an update from what I got you before when we were discussing this. The state of New Mexico adopted this same code on the first of this date, so it's already enacted for them. We're required to, to have the same standard they do, and as part of our ISO, we're required to be within six-year code. So currently, we're using twenty-fifteen, so we need to come to twenty-twenty-one to bring us in that ISO. And as I said before, the changes from what we're currently doing, the only thing that's added is food trucks because they weren't included in the previous code, and, um, outdoor public events, assembly of over one thousand because it wasn't in previous code. Everything else is the same as our previous code.
Any further staff comments? Any public comments in regards to the first item?
Cass?
You got anything? Nothing. Commissioner comments? Very good. No, no. I'll entertain a motion that we approve, uh, ordinance zero dash twenty-two dash one-twenty-three.
Second.
Motion second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks, Jerry. And the second item of business in this public hearing is to consider the approval of the Desert Willow subdivision final plat. Mr. McCroskey, staff comments?
Commissioners, uh, this is just basically the final plat approval of a subdivision that was approved on the preliminary plat in April. Uh, they have completed the infrastructure improvements needed. We've, myself, Mr. Tabor, Wes, we spoke with the developer. Uh, Mr. Burns has looked at the infrastructure with regards to the roads. We feel that everything is good to move forward with the final plat approval. Staff recommends it. It has been before the Planning and Development Advisory Committee. They have recommended approval, uh, to you all as well.
Any public, any further staff comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Any public comment in regards to the Desert Willow subdivision? Okay. Cass, you got anything?
No, we've been working with these guys about a year now.
Close to it.
So I think we're there.
Okay.
They jumped through a lot of hoops.
Yep. We have a good subdivision.
Good. Commissioner comment?
Norbert, I'm Mr. Royball. Thank you. It's, uh, I drove by yesterday. It's dropped by quite a bit, but it does look pretty nice, so... Here, Tom?
Yeah, we're excited. Yeah. I, I'm glad to see we've kinda got a process a little better in place for the county. I know in years past, it's, it's left some residue of, uh, of some difficulties on the county. Everything looks in good shape. We appreciate you going through the process. I have recently gone through a similar process with Steve and asked him to correct multiple things that were just terrible to go through. So, um, hopefully the process will get easier. We appreciate your patience with it, but we're a little green on the whole, uh, on the whole subdivision and land development side of Eddie County. And I've been talking with Steve and, uh, and Wes back there. I think, hopefully, we can streamline the process and, and things will be easier, and we can invite, invite more development in the future. So, we appreciate what you've done. Appreciate Steve's work, 'cause it's not easy on Steve then either. He's got a lot of rules to follow. I guess we'll entertain a motion that we approve the Desert Willow subdivision final plat.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
You want me to assign those right now? Sign them up now?
They're down in Adrian's office.
Oh, okay.
So then we need to adjourn the public hearing.
A motion to adjourn? Motion second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for those that, with the ordinances and the plat, get through that. We'll move on to the training agenda then. First item of business is to approve the commission meeting minutes for November one, twenty-twenty-two.
Any questions or comments? Entertain a motion that we approve the commission meeting minutes for November one, twenty-two. Motion second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
The next item is approval of the expense report for October twenty-twenty-two.
Any questions or comments for the expense approvals? I'm gonna entertain a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item on the agenda is a request for a budget increase to cover, uh, an update, county-level revenue and expenditure analysis through the Arrowhead report. Mr. Hooper?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this would, um, update the plan two years, which would be twenty and twenty-one. They've got the numbers to, uh, update the study, and the total cost is gonna be, uh, thirty-five thousand. And then we add a little bit more just for advertising and things like that that we might wanna do during the legislative session.
Shoot, yeah, let's do it.
Yes.
Any, any questions or comments from anybody?
I make a motion we can approve.
Motion second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
If any, if any citizens wonder why we approved six thousand dollars for a study from Arrowhead, then they haven't been paying attention to me in commission meetings, 'cause Commissioner Carlson kinda kicked those things off, and they've been a great, a great teaching tool and a great education tool for the whole state. So we appreciate you heading that up, sir.
Sam, we've traveled around all over the state presenting it, so, and that's thanks a lot to Wes setting those up. And I think that everybody that's looked at that study has, has been, has been taught about where the money comes from and how that we're kind of the stepchild on getting some of it back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wes. Thanks, Commissioners. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the approval of report of general twenty-twenty-two election canvas. Clerk Rossbrum.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I passed out a little earlier the totals that we had. Um, this is a grand total sheet. This one is done by candidate and by category, listing, um, election day, absentee, absentee hand counts, uh, any overseas. All of those totals are added into this, but just so you know, we count... All of those totals are added into this, but, um, just so you know, we count every ballot here that's qualified in Eddie County, and this breaks it down. So, I'm asking for a certification of our numbers.
Any questions or comments?
I'll make one comment. Uh, I've had multiple people come up to me and, uh, tell me what a great job. I guess one lady messed up her ballots. I were right there to help her through the process, and I heard nothing but wonderful comments towards, towards our clerk's office, towards our voting system in Eddie County, so, thank you all.
We work hard. Uh, we train our poll workers. Everybody's treated exactly the same, um, with respect, and we appreciate them coming out to vote, and I hope our voters appreciate the workers that we have, and we can always use more, so if anybody's interested in working on election day, please let us know.
You said you could use more workers or voters?
Both. Yes.
Eddie County was at forty-nine percent. The state was fifty-two and change. I looked through the counties last evening from the Secretary of State's report page, and, uh, forty-nine percent's not bad. We can do better, and that's, that's the way voices are heard, so. There were some counties that were really disappointing, uh, in their turnout, so. You wanna be heard, go vote.
A little more turnout, a couple of spots, make huge difference in some things. Okay. Did we approve that?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Need a motion in a second.
Okay, yeah, we, we hadn't done that. Okay, sorry, all right. Motion second to approve the general election twenty-two canvas.
Motion from Commissioner Carlson in a second from Commissioner Beard.
Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Ms. Rossbrum has asked me to, if you'll sign, there are two copies there. If you'll each sign a testament form, please. Yes, you're the, you're the members.
Yes.
Commission members.
Commission members.
All right. The next item of business is, uh, approval of the IBM Powers nine system capital purchase. Ms. Carroll.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have an old IBM system that now has reached its end of service. Uh, IBM will no longer service. You have to find third-party providers if you want it serviced. So, our solution originally was to, uh, run on a new system with the IBM business partner Triadix. And so, when we finally gathered all that information up and found out the cost for the number of people that need to be on it, and you extend it out to, uh, five years, because that's when the assessor needs to add more records to her Tyler system for another, just about five years. That's where the solution on here says remote into the hosted IBM, paying monthly. If you extend it out, it's like almost a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. But if we go ahead and purchase another IBM system with UPS and five-year maintenance, it's about sixty-nine thousand, so we've chosen that cost-effective and need the, uh, funding to purchase that system.
Any questions or comments on the IBM Powers nine system capital purchase? Uh, entertain a motion that we approve capital purchase IBM Powers nine. Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Thanks, Ms. Carroll. That'll be a good purchase. Now, the next item on the agenda for your information is, uh, an alerting paging system, Chief Mack.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. So, from the Motorola project that we're doing with the radio system, we ended up with about four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars remaining. We've, once we brought on the pay staff, we immediately saw the need for the station alerting, for the firefighters to notify them of the call. So, we started doing some research. Um, we found the Phoenix G-two system. Is what it does is it'll tie into dispatch when the dispatcher gets the call. As soon as they input the location, so the address and the type of call, it will automatically page us. There's an automated voice that will actually do the initial dispatch, so you're not having to wait for the dispatcher to gather enough information to tone it. So, we have units en route sooner than the dispatcher will be able to break off the call once they've completed it and then update the units en route. So, we're hoping it's gonna help on the dispatch side, and it's also gonna help on our side with getting a faster alert. This also includes all the speakers, um, all the connections at dispatch. There is a Motorola piece, but we have enough money left from the radio system that we wanna just use that money, since it's already dedicated to the radio system to finish out this project, and this would pretty much tie it all in together, so.
So, this'll go into the two multi-stations. So, when the call comes, they'll get toned out and...
And then for the volunteers, there is a phone app, which is GPS's, sends them the notification right away, so we can cut some of those previous apps that we've always kinda carried to help with that, because a lot of people just don't carry pagers and radios at work. They always have their cell phones, so.
So, this would redirect previously approved monies to this particular item.
And there is an ability, once it's implemented, that calls back in the city of Artesia can essentially spend the five or six thousand dollars to put the box in the station, and it'll tie into their old speakers and everything, and it would do the same features for them for county calls. So.
Questions or comments?
It sounds like it's something that's gonna be important.
Yeah, and it's, and it's focused towards firefighter health and wellness, so it kinda gradually brings the tone up. That way, it's not a instant jolt to your heart repeatedly.
All right. Thank you, Josh. The next item of business is award of the New Mexico State Fire Marshal grant for loving, Mr. Mack.
So, again, this is just, uh, information that we were awarded a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for the Village of Loving, um, to add the additional bay. That way, we can have the three bays to hold the three trucks that were required by the state fire marshal's office to maintain main station funding, so we're not having to stack trucks down there. And we feel that we can be within that budget.
And that process is underway?
Yes, uh, we actually, tomorrow night, go for the finalization on the sleeping quarters to get the PO issued, so that construction will start, and then we'll do the construction at the base, so.
And that's information, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you all. Thanks, Josh.
Next item on the agenda is the resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Items to discuss or pull? Having done, entertain a motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I was gonna die there. Second. Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is the elected official and department updates. Come on, come on.
I'm ready. Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman. Uh, last commission meeting, uh, Mr. Davis, uh, told you all that we were working on our policy and procedure manual O eleven-seventy-three. Uh, we are going to start working on updating the policy and procedure manual. We have come up with three groups. It's about twenty-two people within the, uh, county, um, in different departments, and they will be working, uh, in groups of three, and as we get the suggestion forms, and I sent that to you guys so that you could see, we've sent that to all employees within the county, uh, and they can make their suggestions on things that they need, uh, changed. I've also sent it to you, uh, so that if you have comments or anything that you would like to put in there or to see, uh, that will be done. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the process or, or how we're going to do this so that you know. We're gonna be taking the suggestions. The groups are gonna work on those suggestions. They're going to, uh, redline that area and make those changes. We are going to give it to Cass and to Mark Allen for legal review, and then we'll put it into the policy and procedure. Uh, when we get that all together, then, uh, we are going to go to an outside legal counsel outside of Eddie County, and they will do the final review to make sure we're legally compliant, and then we will come back and, oh, have the open meetings and present it to you, the Commissioners. And then we will pass it, and then that will be our new policy and procedure manual. Do you have any questions on me, any suggestions, anything that you would like for us to look at or, or anything?
Just make it easier.
Yeah.
Easier to do business with Eddie County, easier to apply, easier to...
Easy.
Make it simple and easy. That's my, that's my only request.
Thank you.
Thanks, Russell.
Thank you.
Other department updates?
I really have an update, but I'd like to, uh, thank the commission for having our back, having the confidence in my department, my staff. Thank my staff, of course, uh, the election officials who make it possible for people to go vote, and, uh, I appreciate the voters for being kind and respectful to them as well. It takes the county to run the election. All the departments that helped, the sheriffs who ran ballots, uh, from Artesia for us, who, uh, came and stood watch at some of our places to make sure there was order, um, facilities who kept them clean and, um, gonna miss somebody, HR who got our doors open in Artesia and got that all set up for us, um, emergency management for generators, backup generators. God forbid something went down, and it didn't. Just wanna thank everybody. I'm sorry if I missed somebody. Appreciate you.
Road Department?
Yeah, Road Department too.
Helped deliver hit-and-machines and...
Thank you. Anyone else? Department? Chief Mack?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so, on our Facebook this month, we started sharing our monthly statistics, so for the month, we ran two-hundred-and-forty-seven calls. Obviously, Friday night, we had a pretty significant tank battery fire, started at one o'clock in the afternoon. It was about one forty-two, and the initial call came in, and we cleared the scene around two-thirty, and units were fully back in service about three-thirty in the morning, so. We saw some issues with foam, so we made some changes on the scene. Luckily, we have that RFP to call them down, so we made those alterations, and the fire was brought back under control, and we were able to keep it contained and isolated to that single location, so. But aside from that, we're staffing-wise, we're doing pretty good. I think we're down to three positions, and we've got some testing this Friday, so hopefully, by the end of the year, our goal is to have it fully staffed, so. But the response is definitely helping the volunteers that are actively or doing an exceptional job, and they're running a lot of calls, so I just wanna recognize them and thank them for what they do still, so. If you have any questions, feel free to call Jared or I, and we'll have the answers for you as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Others? All right. Legislative update. I don't, legislators are all getting a breather before the, the gear up for January. It's, uh, yeah, it's a busy time. The next item on the agenda is the travel request consent agenda.
Any items to discuss or pull? No. See, Jason's not going anywhere, so we don't worry about anything there. Guess we'll entertain a motion that we approve the travel request consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have no emergency business today. And we have no legislators here, and the elected officials...
I have one more comment. I forgot IT. I probably forgot somebody else too, but they, they kept us...
All poll workers, poll workers.
Oh, I see, yeah, the election officials, definitely. But they kept us up and running and put our results out there election night on our website, so I appreciate them as well.
All right. County manager comments? I normally don't... I attended the county manager's affiliate meeting last week in Santa Fe, and I normally don't go into things like that, but, um, I was, I was pleased and pleasantly surprised, uh, in attending the meeting, the, the content and the discussion with other county managers, and I guess the, the biggest thing was how grateful I was for the elected officials, commissioners, and all the other elected officials and department heads for how they operate and how they conduct themselves and how they conduct county business. Eddie County is blessed with good leadership in that regard, w- when in discussion with other county managers and some of the challenges that they, they have in managing their, the business of the county that they're from. And so, I wanted to say thank you and extend my appreciation for the commission and what you do and how you do it, and the other elected officials and the department heads. I don't say that often enough. I should be better at it. I'm not, but, uh, but thank you. Eddie County is fortunate in many, many ways. We are in a very economically active, somewhat prosperous portion of the state and portion of the nation that affords good jobs, reasonable pay, um, quality of life, and, and many, many other things, so. As Thanksgiving is approaching, that's one of the things that I am thankful for, and I hope others in the county have that same level of appreciation. Not everything goes right every day, every moment, but how we rise to the occasion and respond to those circumstances or situations, we do, we do a good job, and we do it with integrity and, and, um, forefront in the mind is what goes on for the citizens of the county. The public comments this morning, uh, related to the amicus brief. The brief was multiple pages, but I think had they read the brief in detail, they would've come to understand that the county didn't pick a side and entity or another. The county's petition was to acknowledge the authority provided to a state agency that has detailed instructions on how they're to conduct their business, and if that entity doesn't do their business the way that's intended, there are checks and balances to accomplish that, and so it wasn't that Eddie County chose an entity over another. It was the matter of having an office of authority act with that authority, and if that authority's not appropriate, then the state needs to address that authority. And so, that was the purpose of the, the filing. It wasn't to demean one, one entity or another, so, uh, that's unfortunate that that's how it's perceived, but I would encourage those individuals to read that brief in detail and look for that, uh, content. But with that, it's a time of year when we may have opportunity to recharge, you know, some days off, be with family, be with friends, and I would encourage us to do it and do it safely. Again, we have much to be grateful for here in the county, in, in what we do and, and how we do it, so thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to, to address them. Next is county commissioner comments.
Commissioner Cordova.
Next is the county commissioner comments, Commissioner Cordova.
I just want to extend my thanks to Kara and Darlene and your team for running a very smooth election process, and, and really just think, as you said, the, the poll workers, the election officials, you know, I think that we represent ourselves with integrity and respect, as you said, towards everybody, so. Just a big thanks and, you know, really appreciate the work that you guys did. To echo County Manager Davis, it is Thanksgiving time, I extend, you know, that, I hope you have a very good holiday to everybody, stay safe, use this time to reflect on what's important to you, and congratulations to all the elected officials, I look forward to working with you, so, thank you.
Commissioner.
Just a couple of quick things, I do, congratulations, as, as Cordova said, to all those, some, some new folks and, well, I guess a lot of new folks, so, sort of, right, you're here, but you're in a different seat, and owed everyone else, so, congratulations to all, all of y'all, I, I look forward to continuing on with the county, making sure that, as Al said, we're representing the best we can for all citizens, I think that's important, and I, and I think that's what, what we try to bring to the table on a regular basis. As far as some of the other things, you know, it really bothers me every time we talk about election integrity, because I think if they, I think our clerks do an incredible job of meeting you wherever you want to, to talk about it, do a great job of talking about it, do a great job of explaining how this process works. And I do think more people took advantage of that than normal, I don't, I'm not going to say a ton, but more, and I do appreciate that. I think folks that, that actually want to be educated, rather than just pretend you know something, go get yourself educated on, on it and the process and everything else, so that when you do speak on it, you see how it worked. And so, for those that did, that I, I truly do appreciate, the election is, is crucially important to everybody, because I want folks to understand that when you do go vote, your vote does count, your vote is important. And I think the more and more we, we let this continue of, of the misinformation out there, and I'm not saying this misinformation everywhere, but in Eddy County, I, I, I think I, I can speak to our election process and I feel confident in it. So, the folks should feel confident too.
Yes.
If you want change in the nation, if your state only turned out fifty-two percent of its voters, it's hard to have change. When your county turns out forty-eight, forty-nine percent of your voters, it's hard to have change. We, we worry so much about did our vote count, well, half of us didn't even vote, so come on, folks, I mean, let's, let's get that process in shape. If you're worried about it, show up and vote, that's how you make a difference, that's what this country was founded on, and it's crucial. So, to those that are worried about it, please, show up, vote, come to the clerk's office, let them explain the process. They do an incredible job, and I'm very proud when we certify our election here in Eddy County, because I have utmost confidence in y'all on how we conducted ourselves, so, congratulations to y'all, I'll say it again and again, as many times as I can. Couple of quick things, obviously, we're in playoff time, I say that all the time, on our side. Because that's where I'm coming from, so just, just put that out there, but Artesia did look pretty good in the last, last game, we did, we made it to halftime again. So, we'll be headed to Deming, so they're traveling this week, our volleyball team did fall short this year up at state, state champions last year, they fell short this year, but congratulations to all those kids, had a great season, traveled safe everywhere, which is really good and important to us, and hopefully we'll continue to have safe travels if we have a few more games to go before our thirty-first state championship. So, that's good, good, good to see and good to hear. I'm not going to go personally into the amicus brief, I can't, but we're all going to talk about it, and I would rather pass that to the water rights guys, as they can speak to it, but I do think it's important, as I said about elections, with a lot of things, a, a lot of folks come in and say, man, come in, ask questions to Al, ask questions to any of us at any time, we're, we're more than happy to answer them, because we want to make sure everyone has the information they need and desire on anything, roads, water, whatever we're doing, we want to be transparent and open to everybody, so with that, I'll turn it over to y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson?
I too would like to thank all the people involved in our election, I think the election process in Eddy County went really great, and I have no qualms whatsoever about certifying our election results, I think that they're just what they should be, and so I have no problems on that. Kind of a little bit about the amicus brief I agree with, with Al. I certainly am not in favor, I'm in favor of, of Intrepid over anybody else. I do have a concern as, you know, filing different documents and stuff with the state that whether I can rely on the determinations and notices and extensions and stuff that I get from a state office, not even exclusively the, the state engineer, because I don't even deal with them, but if... I guess my question is, if, if a department is given the authority to issue a determination or an extension or whatever under statute, can I not rely on that, and that was always been my question about that. And, you know, whether the procedure's right or not, there's also, there's also a department at the state level to deal with that, and that's called a state auditor, because he's entrusted with making sure that all the procedures and statutes are adhered to by the different departments within the state government. And so, if you don't, if something's not working, or you think that there's something wrong with some of the determinations coming out of there because of procedure is not being adhered to, then you file a complaint with the state auditor's office, and they go in and audit, and they audit every transaction to see whether, and every process, to see whether that is in compliance with the state statute and government, whether it's federal or state government, and so, that is my question. As filing tax returns or stuff, can I, you know, in the end, can I rely on what I might get from a state department or the taxation revenue or whoever that may be? And so, that is always, that was my concern. I'm definitely not in favor of Intrepid over anybody else, and I don't want to appear that way, but I do have a concern whether I can rely on determinations coming from the state level. Thank you.
I would, like everybody else, like to thank the county clerk's office, I mean, they've always done a good job and throughout history, and the voting in Carlsbad, they have done a good job. Among all of the gripes and concerns and misgivings throughout the whole state, we've never suffered that here. I'd like to congratulate the voters that did vote, not so much the fifty-plus percent that didn't bother to show up in such a contentious election. People need to do what they need to do, and there's a lot of registered voters that might, could have made a difference in one particular election had they showed up in Eddy County. On the amicus brief, there's two or three things I'd like to, that I was noticing in all the arguments, something that came up. The process by which the state engineer buys water rights back is fine, I agree with that, water rights are private property. I think all of you guys out there would consider your water, water rights private property, just like Intrepid did. And they didn't pay Intrepid for those water rights, they just took them. That's a precedent set against everybody that I don't think is a good deal, and that's one of the reasons the city of Carlsbad wasn't like some of the other people around that went along with some of this stuff. City of Carlsbad stayed out of it. I think it's pretty well-known, anybody would check, there's a lot of water rights that have been held in a base, valance for growth for the city of Carlsbad for a very long time that have not been used. Is the next precedent, they're coming after the Carlsbad water rights? And to what Commissioner Carlson referred to, the, this is a very narrow thing that we responded to. If the, if the people that hold those water rights that do their diligence and they file their paperwork with the state engineer every year, as Intrepid has done, you got to be able to trust that. Can you trust them not to come for your water rights next? And that's all I've got to say, so.
Thank you. A lot of good comments said today, I don't really have too much to add. I likewise appreciate the clerk's office, I'm a little peeved at the Republican Party for being so petty as to go and watch the polls here in Eddy County when they could have gone and watched polls somewhere else and trying to make a difference or something like that, and we've got a, the Republican Party is just really... They're really petty in pretty much a lot of the things that they do, and there's, needs to be some, some new leadership there and a few things, so. I won't say much about that, I will say that there is fifty percent of Eddy County that's not registered to vote, so probably have some bone to pick with them, and then the other fifty percent that didn't show up to vote, that's only about twenty-five percent that shows up. Things could have, things could have been, things could have been different, I guess everybody was too busy working and enjoying the, the surplus here in Eddy County and, and all the prosperity, so prosperity will eventually catch up to us, so. Anyways, I guess that's really all I've got to say, so.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes our business.
All right. Meeting adjourned.